...a regular meeting on the city of Rio Grande City, Texas. It's Wednesday, January 27th, 2020. It's 6:07. We're in Commission, Shayvers, and City Hall. Uh, we're going to item number one. A, uh, all the order and invocation and President Bolisian, someone ask Brother, please Jesus and invocation, I want to ask the regular meeting.
Let us pray. Holy and good and faithful God, we know that you are here with us, guiding us, telling us to be a people who remind one another that each of us matters. Each of us is loved by you, is praised by you, each of our hairs is counted by you. Oh God, may this be an occasion where the work that we do here might flow from this place to help the residents of Rio Grande City and beyond, all for your glory. We ask for all of these things in Jesus's name and over by the power of your Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the citizens of this country. I am praying for the success of this project, and I am praying for the success of this project. Thank you. Thank you, Brother. Thank you, Ray.
We go to item B, a vote call and finding of form.
May I have a question? May I approach the master?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Joe?
Here.
You have a corner, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Well, do we have anybody in sign off for the topic call?
No, sir.
We move to item B, proclamation of Census 2020.
Mr. Ian will be reading the proclamation.
Okay.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the next decennial census will be taken in the year 2020, and for the first time residents will be able to respond online, by phone, or by mail. And whereas an accurate population count is vital to our community, residents will be by helping planning to determine where the local schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities. And whereas more than $675 billion per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and communities based in part on census data. And whereas, community planners and governments rely on census data to determine where the most need for additional social services exist, and who gets needed funding for such a community develop- for such as community development block rents, and whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas information from the 2020 Census and the American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and increased employment. And whereas, the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas, a united voice from business, government, community-based and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 Census message to reach more of our citizens. And now therefore I, I can say how it is, oh, I'm here, Mayor of the city of Rio Grande City, and the entire city commission do hereby declare that the city is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a complete and accurate count in 2020, and will support the goals and ideals for the 2020 Census, and will disseminate 2020 Census information to encourage residents and our community to participate, encourage people in our community to place an emphasis on the 2020 Census, and participate in events and initiatives that will raise awareness and ensure a complete and accurate census, support census takers, as a help our community complete and accurate count. Seek opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in our community by establishing a Rio Grande City Census 2020 Complete Count Committee, and utilizing high-profile trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the 2020 Census. And when is thereof, I have here on two, set my pen and call the seal of the city of Rio Grande City, Texas, to revisit here too, on this 27th day of January 2020. Oh, I'm here, yeah, I'm City, uh, Mayor of the city of Rio Grande City. It's a long, uh, property, but an important one, and I want to recognize some of those trusted voices and advocates for the city that are here with me today. Please stand. And Commissioner, do you will please give them a round of applause? We have a dedication to the community, and we have joined together to promote the message of the census and work for getting the count this spring. And so we have representatives from education, we have representatives from the public sector, bank-based community organizations, and others, and I, and in the private sector, and in just the regular resident body, and we appreciate the time that you contribute to this because we know that it's an important cause. And we also have with us our partnership specialist, and Yesanna Garcia is local, she's from Stark County. And Miss Garcia, are you joining me up here?
Okay, sure.
She has brought us together and has allowed us to combine our efforts to put a better message out in 2020 Census, and I wanted her to introduce herself because she's new to the program, but no stranger to Stark County.
Hello, and thank you for having me, Yesanna Garcia. I am hoping I'm overjoyed for a proha. I've been in Edinburgh for, you know, 30 years or so, but I, my mom is still here, all I have here. And I'm really happy to, to be a part of the community. Uh, this morning we had a really, really awesome, um, presentation. It was on getting everybody together, um, basically to, to see if we qualify for some, some funds that are out there, uh, but at the same time, I believe it was, it might have been the first time that we all came together as a community. So it was representation from Stark County and Roma ISD, and Rio Grande City ISD, San Sino ISD, City of, um, Escondidas, um, Rio Grande City, City of, um, Rio Grande. And so, uh, so we all can begin to talk about the proposal, but at the same time, we're talking about strategies that we got to maybe for the first time, see, okay, so the here's the Complete Count Committee, uh, not from Roma, I can partner with the Escondidas because they also have a Complete Count Committee at, at Roma, and then the county and so forth. So, so it was a very, um, it was a very good meeting because now, um, it's, it's a lot better if we find out what everybody else is doing, because we can partner with them and take advantage of what's already happening, and then make our, our message a lot stronger. So, uh, so I'm here, um, as representing the U.S. Census Bureau, and your goal is the same as ours. Um, South Texas is a hard to count area. Uh, historically, we have not done as well as other parts of the state in terms of the, uh, the self-response rate, and so we, we want to make sure that we do better. As you all know, um, the more people that we get to respond, the more funding that, that we get. And, uh, there are some areas that are even more, they're harder to count. So South Texas is hard to count, and then Stark County is a little bit even harder because there's a lot of rural communities, and so it's harder to get that survey out there. A lot of the surveys are going to be hand-delivered for that reason. So it's just a, a bigger challenge, and so the more that we work together as a community and with the Census Bureau and with all the sectors of the city, whether it's the health, the faith-based, the business, the education, and you know what, it's happening, and so I'm just happy to tell you all that, uh, you know, we have very high hopes that we're going to do a lot, a lot better, and that is just all good news for, for the community. So I, again, I thank you all for having me today.
Thank you for being here.
I also would like to request a photo, as every time our group comes together, we make sure we take a photo and, and get the message out that we are organized, and that we are ready to push the census message forward. So if you don't mind for a moment, and with your permission, we'd like to get a photo with our members who are here today.
Sure.
Thank you.
Senator, you can stand up here.
Okay. Oh, yeah. For us, for us. Okay. Okay, one, two, three. Let me take one. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you again for presenting. How do you want to start? Say something from. Thank you. We'll move on to item A, departmental report.
Yes, sir. We have first up, Ms. Norma Holtz.
Good evening, Commissioners and guests. Just want to say first of all, we are a part of the Census who we can count, and I'm proud to say that today we received awards on behalf of the Grand City, the Texas Forest Full Fund. We are pleased to approve a grant to, with $62,000 in, to the city. Talking about today, I was like, wow, that's a lot of good tips, but we already turned it out. But thankfully, we had good results.
And Norma, you might want to mention since this was not the first attempt?
Right. Actually, this was our third attempt. Uh, I, I did have the grant right of software, and we weren't unsuccessful, so I challenged Dalinda, I said, Dalinda, if you can do it, that's right. What can we use?
They went out there also. There you go. Congratulations.
Third person is there. And, uh, also, we just got word that we're pleased to announce our Grand City Public Library will be received to the 2019 Achievement of Excellence Libraries Award. Of the 571 public libraries located in Texas, your library is one of only 53, who have earned this year's award. With this honor, your library continues to be a top, on the top 10% of all public libraries in Texas.
Awesome.
Yay!
Now finally, well, also, the excitement thing is that the American Library Association, together with the Oprah Book Club, personally invited the library to be to, for a book club. And it's only a handful of libraries throughout the United States, and we're one of it. So I challenged our school district librarians and our, some of our papers to join. I had to decide the non-disclosure, that we would not reveal the title of the book until Oprah herself revealed it, which is a big hit. So we have a book club, and we are submitting things to the Oprah Book Club. Uh, we sent down our first tweets yesterday, or Twitter, right, or Facebook, and on Facebook, and they were the first ones that liked our, our, of what we tweeted, and also the author herself. So they're following us. We're going to be submitting things to the creative director of partial production, so it's all very exciting. The group is excited. We're going to have a meeting on Friday, and hopefully, you know, continue doing things for the school district and, and the city. And, uh, then finally, one great thing that we have also, we've added to our library, and we have Ms. Janes Canso Cuentes, and I'll introduce her to you all. And she replaced Stephanie.
Hello, she's going to be joining us, and it's a very delightful meeting.
Welcome, Ray. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz, and congratulations, and, uh, and also, for being persistent, and congratulations again.
Do you have a letter of recognition, please?
Uh, well, I have.
You want to petition, you want to petition?
Sure.
All right, next up, Mr. Cruz.
Any questions? Um, we got some good news, uh, late last week. Uh, we received, uh, some good news from Texas Water Board, uh, that we received over $2 million in assistance. Uh, we have until February to accept that. Uh, we're going back and forth for engineers in TCU right now to see what's the best route. Uh, but the good news is that there is funding out there that we have, but we see, uh, something that will be available for us, and so we're going to be meeting these next couple of weeks and possibly making a trip up to Austin, uh, to meet with them, to see what's the best route to go. Um, although it's-
This is the wastewater?
Yes, the wastewater treatment pad. Uh, even though it's $2 million, we're, we're short about $5 million, uh, so we'll have to be coming to the Commission in the next few weeks to also decide what's the best route and what direction the Commission wants to go in, uh, proceeding to secure this funding. Um, we, the reason I'm dressed like this is I spent, uh, most of the day with our field staff outside. Uh, we had TCU visit us today. Great, uh, reporting. Uh, I'm very happy, very proud of our staff. I know we have some of our office staff in here, uh, but the guys, the work that they've been doing outside, um, every violation that was still pending and still open, um, it was just awesome to hear them saying they're closing some of these violations out, uh, that were open. So, uh, good reports, uh, from them, and we're still going to meet with them tomorrow. Uh, they're not done with their, their, their investigations and their reporting, so we, Mr. Perez and I have meeting with them tomorrow to kind of wrap up and do a basic interview. Uh, but I'm happy and very proud to say that the efforts of our staff outside, uh, has not gotten unnoticed by TCU, and they were very, very, um, vocal about the work that they've seen and the improvements that they've seen. So I want to commend them, and let's bring them to you right now.
So at this time, there are new, new findings?
At this time, at this-
That's of today? Well, the main, the main visitor was in the sewer plant, and then they're working through the list.
So, so clearly, uh, any violations that were opened, they can't cite us again, and she made that very clear, because they can't cite some violations that are currently open. Uh, they want to make sure that those violations didn't get worse, or there wasn't any new violations. Um, but they were very happy to see that we're also doing, uh, work on the racetrack. I don't know if you guys are aware, the racetrack is a very, very big violation. Um, we since have contracted, the contractor is helping us get rid of all that stuff that's there, um, and they saw the plans that we have to improve that system, so, um, I don't want to jinx us, but, uh, it, it was very good reporting today, a very good, uh, feedback from them, uh, but tomorrow will be the exit interview, uh, with the city manager, myself, and some of our supervisors, so we'll go from there. But, uh, like I said, I just, it all goes to the staff outside, because everyone there out are, um, working in day and the hour, we're working with them just to make sure we're able to TCU nice.
Most of everything that was identified today, there are minor violations that can be fixed in 14 days. We're talking about areas that need to be finished, a marked property, but we're not talking about major issues. These things need to be fixed in 14 days.
Yeah, uh, so any, and they're not violations, they're just, uh, some concerns, that's what she addresses on that right now, the concerns. Uh, obviously, it's an old facility, and she's very well aware of that, um, so she get, we have about 14 days to remedy those before they get reported as violations, so, uh, even as we were speaking, uh, Mr. Cantu, Enrique Cantu was already out there fixing some of those issues, um, with, with his staff, so, I mean, they saw that, how, how quickly we responded, which, like I said, just goes to show the work of our guys out there, so.
Mr. Cruz, at the next meeting, we see a couple of the reports and the findings, and what are we doing to address those concerns?
The, the, the-
Well, whatever you get, uh, you know, I just mean, the exit meeting, but it's something like concerns that is bringing up you, and, uh, of course, uh, kind of action moving forward to address this concern.
Yes, sir. And also what we want to do as well too is about bringing the plan, the action of what route the Commission wants to give as far as improving the water plan and what direction, because obviously, as the day is opening in the room, it's the capacity, um, and, and she's well aware of it, and that was a question I brought up to, to her as well too, is, you know, what are options? Because obviously, I know our, our engineer mentioned that there's possible other grants that we can go out for, but we'd have to wait a little bit longer, possibly another year, uh, after you go out for that funding and to be able to receive notice of, of funding. Um, unfortunately, we've kind of pushed the ball on, on this, you know, a long time now, so they didn't want to see some actions pretty soon, uh, so that's why we'll have to come to the Commission and see, uh, what direction the Commission wants to go with this. Also, the report, uh, the water tanks, I think haven't noticed are being construct, uh, constructed and, and, uh, maintained and about back up to code. Uh, we have about two weeks left on the one that you see that's currently being, uh, repaired right now. Uh, I know Mr. Commissioner Jones had voiced that he wanted the same logo that was in the old one, uh, to be on, the new one that's being done, so that's going to be done. And then as soon as they get done with that, they'll be heading over to the other tank, which will take them about another 30 days, so, uh, they're moving. It is, does not affect the schedule of what we currently have. I want to make that very clear, does not affect the schedule, uh, in the other tanks and their maintenance, um, they're actually back on track with everything, uh, because they have brought two crews down just to make sure that they caught up on everything. Uh, they had some weather delays up north, but they're since bought an extra crew to help them catch up on everything.
Yeah, just to give you a background, they were scheduled to come in late last year, but we're, kept them in working in another site, in another state, and now we're catching up.
Public information, it won't interrupt with public service either?
No, sir. Actually, uh, and I, I know we had talked about it, and that's another thing we want to bring to the, the councils. Uh, after meeting with Mr. Cantu, Enrique Cantu, and our engineers, and Mr. Perez, uh, we have something, some goals and some plans that once we get that tank up and operational, Commissioner, uh, it's going to actually help, uh, with the pressure throughout the city as well too, uh, so we have some plans. Obviously, I don't want to bring anything formal to you right now, it's all preliminary, it's some ideas that we're trying to bounce around, um, but hopefully by next mission, we can have all this stuff, uh, before report for you guys, so that we can make a decision over the next week.
Any questions? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Much love.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Vlad?
If you don't mind, I'd like to report.
Sure.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a report on the Saint Facts Project. Since the groundbreaking, we've pushed a lot back to the outset. Uh, the majority of course is very notable, but when you pull down all the trees, the road tracks will be moved. But just some numbers, so you can see how much is moved. Under the tree court, we have a tractor, White Joey, is contracted for a later, $389,844.60 of this, up to this date of the 17th, 82,000 cubic yards of it moved of dirt. So a lot of the first tracks along the highway are basically already at the renovation, uh, they still have to do, they're compacting, getting a survey to confirm that.
Ms. Perez, is that, that's about, what, 25% there?
Of the total project?
Yes.
Yes. The total project of the excavation, they're almost at 35,000, because I think it's a lot of period of the building, it's going to contract. So, you know, when you look at, we have about 65,000 cubic yards, you know, it's going to, it's moving, but, uh, that you use it to, 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 to the tree. On the other side, we also see some of the work being done on, behind the Capobello, the water and all that. That's part of the off-site improvements, and those are part of the agreement, we have a 3A agreement, so those offsites support all the infrastructure for sure, uh, for the site. And that is aligned to get from the site and adding to the list nation, and then from the list nation, we kind of going with, this is also part of the, it's part of all of one site to bring the support to this site. The, uh, water is also being ordered, the Highway 3, uh, and that's in the water portion to, and along the new 75. And I mentioned we're going to start with the utility infrastructure on Rabbit Road, that we have a lot of proposals. So the utility of offsites, that's $295,773.30, and the storm sewer, and the ass concrete, $89,319, close to the contrast. Utility with Vistar, and the Rabbit Road with GOC Construction. So all of the different facets of the project, utilities, the creek, racetrack, landmark, they're all being worked inside of 23, including the subdivision plant, or the, the, to get all the conditions fit, to report the plan, and therefore the developer can start, you know, making the side kind of sections with the tenants. We have received from one of the tenants, a site plan, and the, uh, pillar side, side that they have. So we know that this is within the next month, a month ago, actually, we seen some of the streets going in there. Um, another note that I want to, I'd like to do, is I was just asking some questions on the project. It's our voluntary tax assistance code for start of 27, uh, close to 300 families are assisted free of charge. Uh, the city has, you know, graciously, we then the city hall from 5:00 to 7:30 PM, and it's free of charge. Last year, there was a $200,000 refund came back to me from the street services. We want to make that one out. And lastly, um, the web app, uh, marker, the sister marker will be set up at the STC, and the Yarri Hall, we have a grand, a great opening of the KFC, Phil's Fast Food Scene, uh, as being the strike, the Melon Strike of 1961, as the civil rights movement down South Texas, so that would be commemorating that event on the scene. And that's the first, first, and the TCI, the other one. So the Charlie, any questions, that's my end.
Do you have any examples of the buyer? I know there can be going on.
Yes, uh, I know that, when we first moved over here, it kind of went down, but we're already like over 200, we're like 200 and a half, and the refunds get greater because of the allowance we've been given. Once it was 200, it's, it's, it's actually, we may not actually be able to present those.
Mr. Perez, uh, one quick, uh, also reminder, and because Ms. Perez was talking about free assistance, to remind me that tomorrow, uh, we just got a email that we'll be having a, a, another food drive tomorrow from, uh, RG Food Bank, and it'll be located here at City Hall, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to do this on a monthly basis to help the community out, um, so that would be tomorrow, same time that we usually do it. Uh, if, if any of the Commission has an opportunity to come out, it'd be great for you to come out and, and, and obviously see the, the amount of people that were able to assist. I think last time we helped over 1,500 people, um, so every time it gets a little bit bigger and bigger, so, uh, that will be tomorrow, and that's, uh, being donated by some private, uh, companies and, uh, RG Food Bank, so, just a reminder.
Have we posted it on the website?
Ashley. Oh, sorry?
Have we posted the information, uh, what time?
Not yet, but I received it just before the meeting started, so it's a question.
Yeah, the- They can request that we don't post it, uh, to in advance, because, um, it, it can get pretty, uh, so they, they, they request that we post it at least, you know, a couple hours before, obviously, as soon as we get it, we post it, but, uh, it will be posted before the, the end of the week.
I was hoping you'd post it, um, yeah, obviously, that it'll be in the meeting's open, just in case. I was talking to posted, yeah, obviously, that didn't mean so per just because I was realizing what I was saying. She said that we post it early, early, people will show up from out of town as well. And it's overwhelming, it's embarrassing, you know, there's one that it's wise, so.
Last, last one, and we had some private produce companies that came all the way from Denver to come assist and donate some of the produce as well too. So I'm going to try to get them out here again tomorrow, tomorrow again. It's just awesome to see, you know, some of these private companies coming in, but produce companies enjoying efforts with the R G Food Bank to help the community. So we'll be having it going tomorrow.
Good evening, I'll be brief. I just wanted to share some building permits by the age of numbers that I truly like from here. Final of two thousand eighteen on residential construction, and again, this is building only. We have over eight million dollars of investments, and in commercial, we had over six million dollars. Two thousand and nineteen, residential, it was nine million dollars in residential construction, and in commercial, sixteen, over sixteen million dollars, up to a million dollars, uh, more than two thousand and eighteen. And obviously, this year is not disappointing. We've been very busy with homes, you can drive around, you see at least a home or business. You see also Main Street, you got new businesses, new buildings. They're providing a lumbered field that I want to discuss in the previous meeting that's coming up for, you know, maybe a remodel extensively. So you got another sort of building that you don't have to worry about, that's falling apart. We're growing, staying busy and certain numbers, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Anyone else missing? We're good.
No questions from council or ordinance, no? Let's go ahead and move on to item number two, consent agenda. We have item A, approval of departmental travel requests, approval of minutes from previous meetings, and approval of action taken at the meeting of the Reverend C D E B C, item December eighteen, twenty nineteen. You can either take them all together or something.
Now, number ten, general changes or concerns, I have motion to approve items two A, B, and C.
Five seconds. Motion from, uh, a second from Mr. Jones, although it may be certified by say nine, although against example, all prepared. We do want to do item number three, resolutions. Letter A, discussion and possible action approving resolution number twenty twenty-one for the record, Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and Required Management Fund.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This grant is our drug and human trafficking grant, which allows our department to actually hire an officer to just maybe do drug introduction and human trafficking throughout the city without having to respond on calls. We are applying for continuance this year for forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars with eighty-four cents. That is to include fringe benefits as well, so it's the salary plus the fringe benefits. We just need a resolution to continue this process of the grant. And the officer we currently have hired through that grant is of the I M O Robbins.
Is the first year for this grant, or we have this?
No, we have this grant since twenty sixteen.
This, this is a mystery, I mean, this, this.
This is going to be the second.
Second?
Second year.
What kind of things are they doing specifically to combat traffic and all that?
Of course, he runs traffic introduction. He's been concentrating a lot on hitting drug houses, crack houses. I know in the month of December, he hit three houses in one day of the search warrants. So he is continuously working, trying to get information where they're selling narcotics within the city.
You see what he's also supposed to do with the border code, with human trafficking aspect of it, or is this still the?
Uh, he's working with the, maybe border code with our I N X and the S C U as well. Regarding the actual human trafficking, luckily, we haven't come across actual human trafficking where they're actually set trap that and others labor. Mainly, it's just the undocumented that are crossing on a regular basis, passing through the cities.
Any other question? Are we in a game mode?
We have the position.
Um, certainly, this is our man, Pro Tem Gasa, the second resolution, if you guys want to approve it as well, it's the same thing, it's only for the.
Crime victim.
The crime victim, but the year, the resolution that he gives.
And this one, I'll give you a quick rundown. This is our crime victim liaison grant. We currently have a member loose as our crime victim liaison for the department. On that grant, there is a cash match that we do have to match. We are asking for five thousand, sorry, thirty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The twenty percent of that is nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine and twenty-five cents. Total grant is forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six with twenty-five cents. This does include her salary plus trainings that she needs to travel through. And pretty much her position is, she's our point of contact for getting the help we need for our victims.
Third, we're sure that the mayor has joined us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Gasa, how are you today? Commissioner?
Resolutions on three A.
Three A.
Three A.
Three.
Three A.
We're just talking about our, the resolution B for the crime victims. This is the continuance grant. Actually, we didn't have a resolution because we were awarded a two-year grant period. This one, we have to reapply, that is to hire a member loose, continue her employment as our crime victim liaison. So we are applying for thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seven to include her salary and travel. There is a cash match of twenty percent, which is ninety, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine and twenty-five cents.
As far as differences, you said from last year, or?
Last year, we, twenty eighteen, we were awarded the grant, but it was a two-year grant.
Right.
So every other, every third year, you have to apply for a one-year grant. So if we work from this year, next year, we could apply for a two-year grant. So we have the grant awarded for two years of them.
This time, we're considering both A and B, is that correct?
Yes, I didn't read out, read B. It was a discussion, a possible action, approving resolution number twenty twenty-two for crime victims liaison grant under the V A Victims of Crime Act, Formula Grant and Required Management Fund, those who will discuss before the crime.
This time, do we maintain the motion at this time, or any further discussion of these two items?
Yeah, I'm going to approve items three A and three B.
Thanks, I'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have motion to approve items three A and three B by Commissioner Amiras, certified by Commissioner Gasa. Any further discussion? Although it may be certified by say nine, opposed, motion carries. Next, this is in order as item four, ordinance letter A, for shooting and possible action, approving ordinance number twenty twenty-one, adopting and enacting an update on fees for residential building permits. Mr. Man?
Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
This proposal of orders follows the legislative legislation that requires municipalities to consider facts for a homeowner for evaluation of improvements. We have to add, we have to base our permits on square footage or other ways, but not to add to valuation. Again, this is an order that we have to enforce. The numbers, I want to start at thirty-two cents per square feet. And we did do a comparable in the city, like the city of Fidalgo, within the convergence of Calan and San Antonio. And actually, each city, they got their own ways of charging. Some of the cities, they have lower fees, but then they have, you know, more fees, like part dedication fees, you know, twice the size as we require. If you're concerned about permit fees to increase, you know, this is not an increase, it's just based on square footage. And doing the math, it's about the same fee that they're going to pay, except just the way we collect the fees.
So we, we have the number of thirty-two cents, that's coming from, how did we arrive with the thirty-two cents per square foot?
Again, all cities value-wise, they're based on, there's charge cents for square footage. And this is similar to Sister City of Fidalgo, same, same size of city. Macallan's are just paying sixteen, seventeen cents, but then their part fees are like seven, eight hundred dollars, which is basically the total amount we collect. At the end of dollars.
And this number here balances out as far as the cost of having to go through the process, manpower.
Correct.
Hours, time, fees, gas, all that, I mean.
Again, on a fifteen hundred square feet home, they're paying about eight hundred dollars, which is what they're already paying at this.
Let me clarify also, if it reads residential building permits, but the actual ordinance that we instructed to draft is just for building permits.
Yes.
It's commercial.
At the same rate, for the justice and square footage?
That's what we instructed, so I just want to make sure that you understand it's a building permit that includes residential commercial. Like just building?
I had talked to Victor, and what I told him was also that this only applies to residential. It doesn't have, you don't have to change it when you calculate for commercial. It's only residential. One of the laws is stay inactive.
So the changes on the residential, how we charge is based now on square footage?
Correct.
And it was not being done in square footage in residential?
It was just a valuation, just like commercial.
Right.
Commercial can stay, but stay specifically asked for cities to, to be based on, have valuation by the way, we are pleased with this.
Well, if you drop the ordinance to specifically be residential, we, our instructions were to just do the ordinance.
That's correct.
Regarding building.
Yes.
But if you, if you all wish, we can just be specific, which, and just word it for residential building permits. But our instructions were drafted for just building permits.
Let's give it to Peters, asking you to amend the residential, correct?
Yes, only residential, we don't have to change any other things.
So that being said, that for square foot, as opposed to the rest, that's charged at the valuation.
Correct. That's the way it is.
So, so if you leave it the way it is, both commercial and residential are now being charged based on square footage. It is correct, okay? It used to be commercial with square footage and residential with valuation. Now they're both the same, so if you leave it the way it is, it is correct for both, because they're both extra.
Extra.
Does that make sense?
So the attorney just needs clarification, how is it going to work that?
Correct.
Well, you, you want, that is wrong, I mean, yeah.
Well, his point is, if you do it only residential, it is correct, because the only change is on the residential. If you leave it the way it is for both, it's still correct, because we're already doing square footage for commercial. Now you're just adding the residential part to this square footage, so they're both correct.
I mean, I suggest we leave it that way it is.
Okay.
Just, it covers you all for both.
Right.
And the only thing we do need to correct is on the first page, it's actually the first reading, the work words, it says December twenty nineteen, and now everybody talks to say the work words, some high quality. But everything else, I think, is correct.
Do any additions or subtractions or correction, we can still do it, second reading anyways. At this point, entertain a motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four A by Commissioner Amiras. Second by Commissioner Torres, any further discussion? Although it's in favor, signify by say nine, opposed, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Man. Next is item five, contracts and agreements, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve correction to change order number one to the contract with Five Star Construction for the live station project. We have there, Ms. Perez?
Sometime back, change order number one was approved by council, and this was to make some changes that were gone on at the D D A live station. So there was some bill changes in that trade with a change order. What happened, and I think in your copy, you have the change order had been approved, there's a tax pose of the, of the number, and it, there was a thousand dollars. So the change order on the regular replace the correct amended contract amount. So you don't get back the right to change order from one, replacing the correct contract amount, and so that would replace the change order from one that was previously approved.
Was the difference in the amount, just to be sure?
That thousand dollars.
One thousand? One thousand?
And it's not in favor of the contractor, it was just to reflect the correct amended contract amount?
This time, do we maintain a motion, or any further question?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item five A by Commissioner Amiras, second by Commissioner Gasa. Any further discussion? Although it's in favor, signify by say nine, opposed, thank you, Ms. Perez. Next is item five B, discussion and possible action to approve the lease agreement with Valley Metro for rental premises at Row Eight East Main Street, Bessie Blaney. Mayor, let's just say renewal of the lease agreement with Valley Metro. The only thing I'm proposing, changing is, Chief Son, is he still here?
Yes, sir.
Um, they, in the, the previous agreement, they had asked to mark off part of parking area in front of the public department. I really, maybe I don't go off for them, but I've never really seen them use or parking buses there, is that the case?
Yeah, I've never seen buses parked there. We really told our officers and our staff not to park beyond them, but I've never seen a bus.
We have a dedicated space in the front on Main Street.
But I've seen it, yeah, you're right, nervous.
But they're not using it, so that's the only change I was like.
The point of that session, decision, not for them, is to what, pick up and drop off, or just to park?
Just to pick up and drop off, but they're not using that.
And then you put it in the back.
Right, so my proposal is, let's get rid of that space, since it's not being utilized, because that's prime property for people if they want to stop by the amount on here.
Sure, I agree.
That's it. Agreement with the modification of parking space.
Is it one year, five hundred minutes?
Yes, sir. At this time, do we entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, we would not.
Without a meeting.
The motion is approved by Commissioner Jones.
Absolutely.
We have a second by Commissioner Amiras, with the modifications to the lease agreement. Any further discussion? Although it's in favor, signify by say nine, opposed, carries. Next is item five C, discussion and possible action to approve memorandum of understanding between the building of the city Public Library and South Texas College for Continuum Education Certificate of Completion and Learner Web Program. Five C. You got this whole square sheet next door in the middle there? Yes, uh.
Mayor, go.
This is, what I understand, is an overview between the library and S T C to for continued education certification. And I've been using the web as a tool to get certified. And I would probably only refer to this, falls on the details about the program itself.
Don't we just started at book club with the book list?
Yeah, I know, right now.
Yeah.
So I went in there, they had received the books, they had a meeting, they had the book in a bag, and I mean, I walked in there.
I received it.
They actually was with me, so we took a picture, and I offered them a hundred dollars, and they showed me the book, and I'm like.
They would not buy.
So Ms. Folds, we're just talking about Oprah.
Can your library, the MOU, give the library the SCC?
Yes, we were approached by SCC. They have a program that is to teach basic computer classes, advanced computer classes. So our staff went through a training already, and so we were gonna open it up. Well, we were gonna start advertising in the newspaper, but we started just in the library, but we already have ten people signed up. So the idea is to have them meet once a week, hopefully for two hours, and, you know, and then we'll help them. And at the end of the, like, for example, the basic computer classes, they'll get a certificate, if they complete that program. And then there's advanced, there's health literacy, and there's financial literacy. So there's different components. SCC will come in and give, I think, a little bit more formal and give them a certificate. So we're very excited about part of the event, and we have the MOU, hopefully, will approve.
And the certificate, which translates to the public library or city, or what do you have?
Yes, we're gonna work with them on that, so it'll be a joint venture.
A joint venture. Anything else on Oprah, Ms. Folds?
Well, she's following us, we're following her. She just mentioned yesterday on CBS, and she plans to make a border visit, so.
Right, they started the rumor that she's talking to the public library, you heard it here from Ms. Folds.
We're gonna hold you to it.
Close it up.
And Mayor, I, they told, but we, the library, we prepared this grant for the system, and we were awarded sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Wow.
So I have the report here, I don't know, I was gonna see who needs to sign it.
She's not telling you the whole story. This was like, they had already gone through the grant writers, and they declined twice, and heard Ms. Giannetti here, and said, let's try it again. And, oh, they, they were awarded.
There, there's no way here.
The determination.
Excellent.
So kudos to Ms. Giannetti.
And that will certainly go a long ways, of course. We need to make sure everybody gets accounted, and that's imperative that, that we do that. So thank you for.
Ms. Folds, maybe we look at you for, as a grant writer?
I know, I know, I'm a great candidate, I really am.
There must be a side to that too.
The interesting thing is that this morning, there was something, because people here from the census, so we went to the school district, Ms. Giannetti and I were meeting about this particular grant, and the deadline is January 1st. But one of the grants that we were not successful in completing was the HOG Foundation. And a gentleman from that foundation gave a certificate, said, you know, we know that here are area leases. I recommend that you apply for the Texas, this, this particular grant, and so he gave us that tip, and he said, do it ASAP. So we did, so then we went, I'm like, you know, going back and forth, going back and forth for about a week. I said, okay, I'm impressed with it. Are you sure? So luckily, anyway, so this morning, but they were giving tips to the schools, to Macani, San Siro was there, Escobar was there, the city, us, the city of Ramon, the city was there, the yard was there. And so they're gonna be applying, and hopefully, they'll be successful as well. But we go where we got our, or again, what we get.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a plan, are you already something, I'm sure, on how we're gonna use it?
Yes, yes, yes. I'll, I'll bring that up to you if you have it as well.
Entertain a motion at this time, item five C. Okay, we have a motion to approve item five C by Commissioner Amínez, second by Commissioner Gataza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Folds. Next item is six, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on preliminary approval of the Golden Oak subdivision in Bayland, the city of Stark County, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, this progress, I think, the planning is only permission, approve this, recommended approval of this land in the bidding of December 17th. This, this our residential subdivision in the middle of town, this is by Camille Lane.
And by where?
Camille Lane goes to Chapo Lanco and Santa Maria Street. Jackson Street going north, the, where it stands, it's Camille Lane. It's a forty-three residential lots. They're proposing to improve it, provided by eight-inch tenure to a line by the city, and also an eight-inch water. The, again, the area residential is a completely used subdivision by, it used to be block heights, number one subdivision, right next to it.
And this is within our EJ?
It's inside, it's the drive, it's over time. Say, to the south of Chapo Lanco and first, Canales Road Street, to Southside, those likely land in between Santa Maria Street, Myron Street, and Chapo, Canales Road Street.
But we were, the housing, we impacted the housing front?
Right next to those apartments, yes. Me and I have the apartments, yes.
Commissioner, and I just want to make sure that we're ensuring that we're securing the park fee.
Yes.
And not kind of waiting until that's a fact, because that's one of those areas.
That's correct, yes.
How are you making sure, regulation, building permit?
Building permit, yes. It's three hundred and sixty dollars per lot, a pound, minimum price.
Mr. Milan, is that where, where the lake is at, in that long line there?
No, no. Well, that's, actually, that is to what, side, more side of the street, I mean, it's developed.
Not mapped, if you want to.
Was this at all included, I mean, it's, it's not in section B, right?
It is in section B. If you, if you know where Charles Street is at, it's just south of that, if there's no access to the right hand, the access would be to the, Camille Lane. Bush Lane. Right now, there's no access to it either.
Okay, we entertain a motion at this time.
I can't move to comment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item B, five, six, B, discussion and possible action on preliminary approval of the FABZ subdivision in Bayland, the city of Stark County, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, this is a single lot, commercial, this is close to Allo's Road, on Main Street. The only individual, he actually has the business past Allo's Road, on North Side of the Freedom. But he purchased this lot, it's recommended for preliminary only, there are still some improvements, including fire pattern, has been still at. But again, he wants to build his, his building and a couple of suites for, for this. It's a lot later, I paid for.
A lot?
Yes.
And the same conflicting already?
Correct.
Okay. Entertain a motion at this time. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amínez, second by Commissioner Gataza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item six C, discussion and possible action on request for authorized liquor license for three zero eight East Second Street in Bayland, the city of Stark County, Texas.
This is for a liquor store on, what used to be the mini-mark food store, this is in the corner of Washington and Second Street, the southwest corner. Again, they issued that license thirty-four, there's always been a right to, or a liquor store, ever since I had it.
That's also movement there, the last couple of days.
Yes, well, it's pretty small, the original owners actually had it for a while, and they decided to do something else with it, and released it nicely, but it's not a direct to person.
No issue with the application?
Yes.
We entertain a motion at this time. Have motion by Commissioner Amínez. And a second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Flores. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is item six D, discussion and possible action on wine and beer on premise license by Oscar Montsabres, a property located at six oh one East Main Street in Bayland, the city, or county, Texas.
This is related to the Case Wine and Pet Bar. The Warden House Chase Restaurant, I'm like, alive, again. Another business downtown, it's still opening.
Which there's a mixer, by the way, social mixer this Friday, there, that location, everyone that's invited. Again, promoting the businesses in the Main Street area, it's gonna be there, this is.
It's a food, Mr. Rosales, it'll be probably the fourth, the ninth, or the fourth, fifth business in town. Actually, the historic history that it opens.
Okay, we have a motion at this time. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amínez, second by Commissioner Gataza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There's no, sorry, I haven't accepted it at this time, all right? Anything else?
All right.
Well, this time, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Amínez, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The adjourn is seven oh nine PM.